There's Gretchen. Can we start?
All right, yeah, we're good.
The meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:30 PM on Monday, January 22, 2024. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm wearing a light gray suit and a black turtleneck. I'll now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer "present." Cora. Cora.
Present, present. Present.
Kimber. Julianne.
Present.
Cecily.
Present.
Case. Hector.
Present.
Carla. Jack.
Present.
Hey, Cora, Mr. President, this is a meeting of a public body, held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice that the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the Commission's website, dcrts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's central meetings calendar at opend-dc.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of us are at the Commission's office building in Washington DC at 200 I Street Southeast, and a few are joined remotely using the Cisco Webex virtual meeting platform. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nikotch Tank and Piscataway people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there an objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Here, no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. Good evening and welcome to everyone. Welcome in particular to our new Commissioner, Jack Evans, a long-term participant with the Commission on Arts and Humanities. This brings the Commissioner count to ten of the fourteen positions prescribed by the city government. Jack will serve through the end of former Commissioner Natalie Hopkins' term until June 30th, since she resigned before the end of her term. The Chair of the City Council has the authority to appoint a replacement if the position is vacant for more than thirty days, and we were made aware of Jack's appointment today. He was sworn in by the Chairman today and is with us tonight. So again, welcome, Jack. Thank you very much. It is our practice to not forget why we're here. So each meeting, we make sure we have a grantee to present to us, and our grantee spotlight today is Monica Jahanboz. Is she here? I see, yes. So you're on. Thank you. You may be muted. No, you're still muted. We can't hear you.
Yeah, okay.
Now you're unmuted.
Okay.
Great.
Hi, hello, hello, can you see me? Thank you so much for inviting me to present. So I'm an artist. I've grown up in this area and I've been supported by DCCAH since, I think, about 2015. I think I applied, started applying a little bit before that, but I think the first grant I got was around 2015. So I'm a painter by training, but my practice has morphed into a community-engaged practice or social practice that is about climate justice and environmental justice, and I'm collaborating with people in DC and also with twelve women from my ancestral village in Bangladesh. Next slide, please. So this is one of my paintings from way back. I started incorporating the sari fabric and the sari blouse into my work as a pre-colonial symbol. I wanted to go back to something that was non-European colonized. Next. And in, next slide, please. Oh, I think I moved myself. Okay. Are you able to see the screen, everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So I think one of the first grants I've gotten was a fellowship, but I also started getting grants from CAH and some other grants to do these community-engaged projects where people helped me to make, co-create a climate justice sari. So people in DC and in other places will actually woodblock the sari with me. The designs, the woodblock designs are mine. Other people helped me make them, and they also write climate pledges and climate justice poetry on the saris. And we complete the sari typically in a ninety-to-two-hour workshop, and then those saris are used in performances and installations. So I've gotten funding from the Commission for several project grants that involve that kind of community work. This is some images of people working on saris with me. This is over in Anacostia with Project Create. This was over at the Eaton Hotel. And I also got a grant in 2017 to work with some women in transitional spaces in Anacostia, and I did workshops and a performance with them, and it was really quite powerful. It was called "Change is Coming," and then I made a film about that, also with a small grant. And then I've done a series of paintings about that and other performances, and I'm happy to say this one is just entered the Smithsonian's collection at the Anacostia Community Museum. And there's more paintings that I'm doing about this kind of community collective engagement on climate. And I've also gotten some Sister City grants that took me to Paris, to Athens, Greece, and I did a wonderful, massive installation in 2019 at the Macro Museum of Contemporary Art in Rome. And that really wouldn't have been feasible without the Commission's grant. I was invited by the museum, but they didn't have a huge budget. So the grant allowed me to go there and bring the materials. It was fantastic experience, and lots of people from around the world saw that exhibition. And I've also used the Sister Cities grant to bring a French artist to DC and had an exhibition with her. And then I've gotten the Public Art Grant several times. This is the Public Art Building Communities Grant. So in 2018, 2019, my first public art grant through DCCAH was for the Rapture Project, which involved co-creating sixty-five saris with community members, two hundred-plus people worked on these saris in DC, plus the twelve women farmers and their families in Bangladesh as well. And we, it was an amazing project. The Smithsonian Folk Life made a film about it. And actually, the Smithsonian Anacostia Museum has now acquired one of the purple saris and one of the blue saris for their collection. And there's been, the film was shown at the Kennedy Center and also in Bangladesh and in Singapore. So it was really a wonderful showcase of DC environmental activism and art around the world. And then here's an image of people in Bangladesh working on the saris, and then the same saris are being worked on here in DC right before the lockdown at Eaton. And this was another project that you all funded. This was called "Warming Waters," where I collaborated with filmmaker and light artist Robin Bell. This was on the canal, and we had to postpone that due to getting permits during the pandemic, but we still managed to have this beautiful installation in July 2020. And I got another grant, this 2022, to do a project called "Sustain." Curator Sarah Tangi worked on me with that. That was an incredible project, wrapping the columns of the Line Hotel with climate justice poetry written by poets in DC who worked with me in these poetry workshops that I've been holding, as well as people in Bangladesh. That's another view of it, another view of it. So, and I got a grant this past 2023 to do farming, a little urban gardening and farming with people in Ward Eight and Ward Seven in different community gardens that we started. And then we had an exhibition about that project at the Nicholson Art, Nicholson Project space in Ward Seven. So basically, I mean, I would like to say, you know, the grants have been super helpful. I'm very grateful to DCCAH. I will say that the Artist Fellowships are very meaningful because they're unrestricted funds. They allow us to grow as an artist and can use it for things like studio rent and supplies. That funding amount has gone down, and from what I understand, I'm certainly getting a lot less now than I have in the past. I think it was about $5,000. In the past, I've gotten eight, nine, or $10,000. And that's too bad because the cost of living has really gone up. And I do think that is a very important thing that I wanted to say to the Commission, that the fellowship is super important. It's good that you're giving it to more people, but the amount should not be reduced. Project funding under the PFPEF grant is also very helpful. And again, that amount should be increased. That's a great grant because you get very specific output from the artist, and all the things I've applied for, and many artists apply for, are engaging the community and involving and presenting work in DC. And that grant is fantastic, but the amounts need to be increased to keep up with inflation. The PABC grant is a complex grant, but excellent and should continue. The Sister Cities grant has been eliminated, and I understand that's not really up to the Commission perhaps, but I would encourage that to be revived. People are traveling again now, and it's really a wonderful way to get DC artists to be seen abroad and also for us to bring in some of our collaborators and bring them back to our city and highlight our city for them and share their talent with people here. So that's all I had to say. Thank you so much. Those are my handles and my contact details. If anyone wants to get in touch, I'm always happy to answer questions. Oh, my email isn't showing up, but it's monicajahanboz@gmail.com. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of you.
Well, thank you, thank you. Having consumed a bunch of these pieces, it's good to meet the source behind it, so thank you. And to your concerns you offered, we do have responses. We can work with you offline. I think the Sister Cities project is in the Office of the Secretary, and we're trying to have conversations to get that going again. Of course, it stopped because of COVID and there was no travel, but we recognize the importance of the program as well. So we thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our public comment portion, we have a few individuals signed up for public comments this evening. The Commission welcomes your comments. They're very important to us. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the Chair. Note that we will not be engaged in dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the Commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may be in your comments. And we'll start with, this is Tom Pollak, DC Tutoring and Mentoring Initiative. Are you here?
Yes, I am.
Please.
Hear me, okay? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very, very much, Chairman Van Lee. You may wonder why the DC Tutoring and Mentoring Initiative would want to do a presentation here, but I'll explain in a moment. Our practical mission is to get a tutor or mentor for every DC student who needs extra academic or non-academic support. We support around fifty nonprofit organizations, ranging in size from neighborhood-level groups to organizations serving one thousand or more students, such as Reading Partners and Everybody Wins DC. That's our short-term goal. Last year, we recruited around four thousand volunteers in DC to help out as tutors and mentors for an hour to a week. But what really brings me here today is our larger goal. We're actually incorporated as the Civic Leadership Project, and our broader goal is really to create a different kind of narrative for what it means to be a member of a community. And to do that, we believe that we need to bring people together to help them think about the kind of stories they're telling themselves and that we, as a community, are telling ourselves about what it means to be a good community member. We live in a very individualistic culture where just taking care of ourselves, taking care of our friends and family is considered adequate, and voting every four years or every two years is, we do that, we've done our civic duty. But we are really working to kind of change that narrative or at least inspire people to think a little more creatively about how they think of their roles as citizens, as human beings, as members of a community. Our focus is, you know, very simply that we are all interconnected. If we can't support our youth, you know, where are we as a community? We take very seriously what Dr. King said about, "We must learn to live and work together as brothers and sisters," or certainly feels increasingly like we will perish together as fools, as he put it. Towards that end, we get out of farmers' markets and try to make very kind of small asks of people, encourage them to think about how they're connected to the kids and how they're connected to their community as a whole. We've also embarked on a series of neighborhood gatherings. We've now done them on Capitol Hill and Ward Four and Ward One and are about to do several more in Wards Three and Ward Eight, where we bring people together to not only help them think practically about how they can get involved as tutors or mentors or otherwise, just contributing to their community, but also just helping them go through a series of visioning exercises to think about what kind of community they want to live in in decades to come and to get very kind of concrete and practical and helping them kind of explore what a community could look like in the future, what it would feel like, and what they would see, to hopefully inspire people to come away from these exercises and this convening feeling like, wow, I have a purpose in my life that's tied up with benefiting the community. And if we can do that for everybody, I believe we'll make a better world for all of us. To wrap up, I don't have a specific ask of the Commission, but I would, we're always looking to partner with people who kind of share our vision for how we can make a community better, and we are especially interested in using kind of the arts and humanities to expand people's vision and imagination of what the world can become if we all work together more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for the work you do. It's important work, and your vision aligns with ours completely, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Andre Holmes with CRI. Ms. Holmes is not here. Nancy Nesvett with Art Lantern.
Yes, I am here.
Good, welcome.
Hello, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak to the Commission. Commissioner Van Lee, can you see me that now?
Can, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I am the Editor-in-Chief of Art Lantern. Art Lantern is a fairly new publication that was founded about a year ago. We have an association, although we are a separate publication and a separate corporation, from New Art Examiner CIC, which is based in the UK in Cornwall. We publish bimonthly. We publish as Art Lantern only online. New Art Examiner, as opposed to us, publishes both online and in print. We exist to critique art criticism, basically, and we do that across all the arts, whether visual arts, performance, music, sound art, et cetera. And we invite numerous people to join our ranks just based on their desire to write, their courage to critique art criticism, and the quality of their writing. We have been made by me. We're open source. We charge nothing at all for subscriptions online. We thought that that was very important. As artists and art students in general, don't have a lot of money to subscribe to art magazines, but we thought that they should be aware of what's going on in the art world. We're incorporated in DC, and we applied for and received within, people tell me, a record twenty-nine days, our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status in DC. Our offices are in DC. I've lived in DC for the last thirty-five years, and most of our staff lives in DC as well. We have people, our Board of Directors head is the head of Studio Art at American University. We have people who work at the Catson on our board as well, as well as other DC-centric people. So we don't have a lot of money at this point. We were lucky enough to get a $5,000 contribution from an angel in DC. And what that did was it funded a new website because the old one was not satisfactory for what we were doing, and it allows us to pay writers. Truthfully, I turned down my salary until we have enough money to pay the writers because I thought that that was much more important. So then I thought that once we had our 501(c)(3), that we could apply in DC for grants from the Commission. And I was notified shortly after we got it that we had to wait a year from the time that we applied for the 501(c)(3) to apply for any grants. And that's a real problem for us because that would mean that we couldn't apply for anything until next September, which is the end of the grant cycle. We have very, very little money left, just about enough to pay the writers for the last edition. So it's become somewhat of an emergency for us. And what I'm asking the Commission to do is possibly give us some sort of dispensation so that we could apply for those grants, perhaps in June, so that we wouldn't miss the grant cycle and we could continue to exist. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Well, first, I love the name of the publication, Art Lantern. I think that's amazing.
Thank you.
And I'm going to direct you to the Executive Director, Aaron. He and I were whispering on the side to see what might be possible. We certainly have our restrictions, so there's some things we cannot do, but perhaps there is something we can do, and so Aaron will be in touch, or you should reach for him as well. So thank you.
Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Has Mr. Holmes arrived? Not good. Not good, but it's what it is. So we'll move on to the Directors report.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Aaron Myers. I am African-American with a black turtleneck and a grayish jacket, and I'm bald. Some of this may be redundant. We're going to start with our staff updates. Let's begin with some important staff and Commission updates. Earlier this morning, Chairman Mendelson appointed and swore in Jack Evans onto the Arts Commission. This appointment was done through an appointment from the Chair of the Committee, the whole Chairman Mendelson, not by the mayor. We welcome him to today, welcome him today to his first meeting with the Commission. Welcome, Commissioner. Brian Yende has transitioned to the Department of Health. What some of you should know, he has been our tireless leader for the Finance Department over the last few years. We want to congratulate, send congratulations to him for his valuable contribution. We've conducted interviews for a new resource allocation officer, and a decision is imminent. Additionally, a warm welcome to Program Analyst, Martine Fernandez. What I want to say about that, we were trying to, and Brian made sure, this was Brian's last choice, to try to bolster that department. So now, instead of having only two people processing our payments, we now have three people, and our goal is to have four to help things out. So the latest addition to the Finance Department, welcome also to Program Support Assistant Logan X. Brown. And Logan Brown is in our new Department of DEI, IDEA, our IDEA Office. We want to take this opportunity to thank Natalie Hopkins for the work toward diversity, equity, and inclusion while on the Commission. We, as a Commission, look forward to working with her as she continues to make an impact on the community now that she is no longer on the Commission. As far as our grants are concerned, as I start out with my grants update, we have noticed that some of our grantees are not registered in DIPS and/or their mailing addresses are not updated in DIPS. I would like to remind our grantees to, A, sign up for DIPS so that we can move your paperwork along, and B, please update your mailing address if it has changed or ensure all necessary contact information is correct. As of now, we have eight hundred and one executed and four hundred and four purchase orders. I would like to take this time to acknowledge the hard work and dedication to our staff. It is our hope that the Council will grant us more FTEs to help us accomplish this work in a way that would minimize the wait time for our grantees to receive their awards. We thank you for your patience, and we are working presently to improve our processes and systems. I want to strongly encourage people to reach out to the Commission or your program grant managers. Every FY24 grantee will be receiving an update from yours by the end of the week. But please don't hesitate to follow up and reach out with any questions you may have, particularly about where you are in the timeline for disbursement and if you're having any issues. I also strongly encourage you to utilize the DIPS helpline. That number is, and for those who are listening, it is 202-422-6870. Again, that's 202-422-6870. You can also email them with questions at supplier@dc.gov. And for this new system, many of us are aware of with DIPS, their helpline has been very responsive. And so please reach out and have any questions you may have. We do hesitate for trying to put blanket shortcuts up because what we have seen is that every person is different. And so there are some that could be congruent, but we found a lot of unique issues. But the helpline has been very helpful, as it should be. As far as our strategic plan, regarding our strategic plan that we voted on to extend last meeting, I've reached out to fellow state art agency directors for suggestions on whom to share RFP with, and exciting developments are on the horizon, and so I'm waiting to hear back from that as well. And for our Commissioners, the NEA is hosting an event on the 30th, and we are joining them in hosting a pre-convening event on January 29th. And to our Commissioners, you should check your emails for that particular invitation. Space Needs Survey, and this is in direct response to many of the public testimony that we have heard. In preparation for our upcoming Space Needs Survey, we urge all recipients to promptly respond upon receipt. This initiative is a direct response to the expressed needs of our grantees who have indicated a requirement for additional space. We've been collaborating closely with DEMPAD. We've worked on determining the optimal structure for the survey. It's worth noting that the survey also has been dispatched to DSLBD. Upon completion, this survey will provide us with our initial dataset outlining the diverse space needs within the arts ecosystem. We will ensure transparency and accessibility by notifying individuals through both email and social media channels when the survey is open. And just as a note, all of our Commissioners will get a chance to take a gander at that survey before it goes out. Links will be conveniently shared across multiple platforms for easy access. And I also should note, this may be come from some of your Council members as well. Furthermore, we are currently in the process of developing the public-facing component of this initiative with OCTO. So stay tuned for more updates as we strive to gather comprehensive insights into the space requirements of our grantees and the broader arts community. Legacy Civil Rights at Sixty Exhibition, there we go. I'm just a product of the public school system.
Uh-oh, watch it, watch it.
So last Friday, we had a press conference and opening reception for our Legacy Civil Rights at Sixty Exhibition. One of many highlights included having Dr. Terrence J. Roberts, a member of the Little Rock Nine, join us that morning and share some words of wisdom. We are truly honored and humbled to have had him participate in our program. We extend our gratitude to all team members. I see also in the room, we have Denise Tolliver here with us. She's been away from us a little while, so we're glad to have you back with us. You put in a lot of great work, and we really celebrate you on that as well. Our artists, our jurors, who collaborated to bring this impactful exhibit to fruition. The public arts team played a pivotal role, taking the lead in making this endeavor a reality. Special congratulations to Michelle for curating her inaugural exhibit, marking the beginning of what will now be an annual event featuring a legacy. And I would want to say thank you to Lauren as she approached me when I first came on the Commission about doing something like this. The lecture on Saturday was given by Dr. Pace, providing insights into the historical context of Dr. Prathia Hall, a contemporary and a colleague of Dr. King. Dr. Hall, who first utilized the phrase that inspired "I Have a Dream," serves as a profound inspiration. Further details about this exhibit and its significance will be elaborated upon by the public arts team in the upcoming discussions. And thank you again to the entire public art team for their dedicated efforts in making this impactful project a reality, as well as our communications and events team who provided critical support in the events of the day. This is a repeat, I believe, here. The grants team will be providing an update soon about possible changes regarding RFA opens, openings. These timelines may look different from some programs than what they've been before, and we will be communicating any updates across all our communication channels. I really want to take note of this because sometimes when you're I really want to take note of this because sometimes when you're preparing to apply for grants, you usually go by what you've done in years past. Uh, uh, and I believe the Grants Team may be providing an update, giving a little bit more detail about this. So really pay attention to our website so you know exactly um, what and when these uh, grants are opening. So don't rely on what you may have done in years uh, prior. Point eight, our week twenty twenty five stakeholder meeting. We will be having another stakeholder meeting on February first at the Third Good Marshall Center. We encourage everyone in the community to participate because it's our goal to fulfill the need that has been expressed in these meetings. We don't want to just put on an event in twenty twenty five. We want it to be community-led. And our events team will share more about this. Uh, the last update I have is Jazz Congress New York visit. It's something I was somewhat excited to uh, attend. I visited Jazz Congress at Lincoln Center, an award-winning performance meets civic space in Brooklyn. I gained uh, valuable insights into a multisensory performances and the crucial support required for artists and venues aiming to offer such immersive experiences. Uh, we are considering potential collaboration with venues willing to provide residencies for artists exploring and refining this new realm of accessibility and inclusion. Um, while in New York, I witnessed a remarkable instances of artists using various sensory elements, including light to create sound, engaging the audience through smells, videos, and vibrations. This innovative approach is still in its experimental phase, representing a new medium and language in the arts. Artists in this field express the need for more than just a few days in the space. They seek extended opportunities, ideally a month or two, to fine-tune their work. The goal is to have dedicated time with an audience, allowing for the perfection and refinement of their actions and their creations. I'm sorry. Although this concept is more established in Europe, it remains experimental and the hope is for it to become a norm in the coming years with Washington DC potentially being at the forefront of this groundbreaking work. What I would say is that for those who are seeking to do this with particular uh, venues, um, I encourage you to listen to them because this is a new type of language. However, I, it's thought within about ten years, multisensory experiences will be the norm when it becomes, when it comes to performing the book of performing arts. Uh, this has been already experimented with in theater to a great deal. We're about to see uh, much more of this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a mouthful.
Yes.
So thank you. Commissioners, any questions? If not, thanks again. We'll go on to the Finance Committee. Kimber, are you with us?
I am. Good evening.
Evening.
So we um, have a little bit of a, you know, just report. We obviously have a staffing change. And so we uh, are actually connecting with the new team later this week. So just pretty much a similar update to what we saw last month as we sort of begin to transition from Brian, who obviously was a great resource to the commission. So let's see, what's our next page here? There we go. So I think just overall, this is high level, just where we are in terms of total budget, what's actually been um, allocated out. And then I think, again, we highlight usually this at every meeting in terms of expenditures and where we are in terms of percent of total budget, continuing to outperform what is required in terms of the percentage that is used to run personnel staffing, uh, meaning eighty-two percent of our budget allocated to grants. So we expect to have a, a more detailed update uh, for next meeting after we have a chance to connect with the new team.
And I would uh, say thank you so much, Kimber. Uh, what we were able to do normally, our uh, Resource Allocation Officer creates these reports. Uh, we want to say uh, thank you to the OCFO's office and their team for being able to provide this report for the uh, commission this, this month.
Great, thank you. And as Kimber said, the numbers haven't changed from the last time you saw, just a reminder of where we are. Questions from commissioners? If not, we'll go to the Grants Committee. Gretchen?
There's unmute. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Gretchen Wharton. Um, Chair of the Grants Committee. I'm a black female, have on black glasses, and tonight the hair is platinum. Okay. On Thursday, January eighteenth, the Grants Committee convened to decide the next steps for recommendations that came from the Grants Revamp Committee. We have Grants Revamp every year so that we can really have an in-depth look into all of our grants to um, with all of the grants managers to make sure that we are on the right track and we've considered all the nuances that are brought up, especially by our panelists. Um, for those recommendations, the committee voted to bring the following recommendations uh, to a full vote on the commission meeting tonight. So I will be asking you at the end of the presentation for a vote on two of our recommendations. The first one deals with expanding the General Operating Support Grant to include first-time applicants, removing the prior grant requirement. Everybody loves GOS is what we call it, the General Operating Support Grant, because it allows our recipients to use monies in non-specific ways, but ways that are critical to their organizations. However, one of the caveats for GOS was that you had to have received a prior grant. So we want to remove that particular requirement. The second piece is to open several of the grant programs in late February twenty twenty four to help spread the app, excuse me, help spread the application and paneling process over a longer period of time. As most of you know, much of this happens in the spring and summer, especially in the summer. It's terrible on our grants committee, um, not grants committee, on, on our grant staff. We are down three grants positions, um, which the council voted out this last session, but we've got to get those back because our people really work hard. They work all through the Christmas holidays just to get where we are now. But we want to start to make things more simple for them and also more simple for our panelists because we need a lot of panelists. Those of you who are out there who want to be involved, please talk to the Grants Team and volunteer to be a panelist. So we, by opening up our grants programs in late February in twenty twenty four, at least several of them, will be able to spread out the process throughout the year. This will ultimately help the applicants applying as well as the grant staff. Um, scroll up, please. Considerations and decisions. FY twenty five GOS recommendation. Currently, GOS offers two cohorts. GOS organizations are those whose primary purpose is to present and/or produce arts and humanities experiences for residents of the District of Columbia. When we say primary purpose, this means when you submit your application for GOS, we look at how the money's spent in what you give us. So the primary purpose is to present and/or produce arts and humanities experiences. We've received many applications over the years from organizations and the majority of their money was not spent on that. So that's something that would negate your application in the beginning. So please make sure that you're an organization whose primary purpose is to present and/or produce arts and humanities experiences. This program requires applicants to have been previously awarded a competitive CAH award. That's something we want to change. GOS service organizations. Organizations whose primary mission is to provide specialized services, which can include professional development, technical assistance, shared operational services, and/or research to DC-based arts and humanities organizations. This program requires applicants to have previously um, received an award from CAH, whether you're a general or a service organization. Uh, scroll up, please. The committee is recommending, recommending that we expand the General Operating Support Grant to include a third cohort. So as in addition to individuals and organizations, we'll have one called Capacity Building. This cohort will support small arts and humanities organizations that have not previously been awarded a grant by CAH. Capacity building needs can include, but are not limited to staff training, longer organizational initiatives, sector strengthening that increases access and awareness of programs for the DC community. The cohort will not require a previous CAH award, providing a true GOS on-ramp for new applicants for those not previously funded. This is a really big opportunity for us to make a difference, people. Beyond funding, the program offers additional features to foster connections and knowledge exchange. Peer mentoring. Connect with experienced arts and humanities leaders for additional guidance and support. Quarterly convenings. Network and share learnings with other cohort members, building a collaborative community. We found in just some of the quote-unquote "social activities" we've had that they've been invaluable because our artists, artists come together, talk to each other, and each one teach one. The Grants Committee voted unanimously to present this particular recommendation to the committee for a full vote, but then I'd like to go over to, keep going, thank you. I want to vote once we finish discussing them. FY twenty five adjusted grant opening cycle recommendation. The following grants are proposed for a February launch. Again, this is going to help everyone, the commissioners, the commission, the grants managers, and especially our grantees. We want to keep general operating, we want to launch in February, general operating support that we call GOS. Projects, events, and festivals for individuals, projects, events, or festivals for organizations. Scroll up, please. Just want to make sure everybody's following us. Oops, where are you here? Okay, grants that will continue to launch during the summer, starting in May, will still be Arts and Humanities Education Project Grant, the Field Trip Experiences, Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, and Capital Projects. Those will remain being launched in May as they are now. We want to bring forward the other ones. We've talked about the benefits, benefits of doing that. And the Grants Committee uh, voted unanimously um, to bring forward both of these recommendations. The committee recommends, one, that it is resolved that the commission agreed to the committee's recommendation to expand GOS grant program to include a third cohort GOS capacity building for FY twenty five general operating support. Remember FY twenty five begins October one. And also resolved that the commission agreed to the committee's recommendation to launch the following um, grants in February of twenty twenty five. These are ones we're bringing forward, PEF for individuals, PEF for organizations. And he starts. I would like to formally make a motion.
To approve.
Question, sorry?
There's a question.
There are questions?
No question. I was just moving to approve, forgetting the question first.
I have, I have a question.
Yeah, ask a question.
Um, my name is Julianne. Uh, I am a Italian-American woman wearing a brown beret today. My question was, you didn't call out the committee is currently reviewing a two-year funding mo- model for all GOS cohorts.
Um, that's correct because we're going to present that at the next meeting. It's not completely worked out yet. And the grants managers are huddling together to just make sure. We did discuss it at the meeting, but we're not bringing it up for discussion now because they want to work through some nuances.
So we will bring that up at the February meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So we have the resolution on the table. I'll now go through the roll call for your votes. If you're in favor of aye, opposed, nay, or abstain. Cora? Gretchen?
Yes.
Kimber?
Hi.
Julianne? Cecily?
Hi.
Case?
Aye.
Hector?
Aye.
Carla?
Aye.
Jack? Did Cora come back?
Cora abstained.
That's right. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Anything else on grants? Any questions?
That's it for tonight. Again, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Public Arts. Carla?
Thank you, Reggie. Uh, good evening. First, I would want to acknowledge Lauren Glover for the work that she's been doing uh, with the Public Arts Committee. Uh, wanna, wanna first go over the grants program, uh, the jury exhibition grant. Uh, we had four jurors, uh, which are indicated here, Karen Baker, uh, Fabiola Delgado, uh, McLea Glee, and Andre Johnson. And then we had four staff leads, uh, and that was Lauren Glover, Michelle May Curry, and Deirdre Darden, and Ron Humberson, Humberton. Uh, the, the jury grants, jury exhibition grants provides support for district-based artists to exhibit their work in a jury-themed visual arts exhibition through grants awards and the use of uh, the commission's exhibition space located in the lobby of our, our street uh, building. Earlier, um, Aaron talked a little bit about the Legacy Civil Rights at fifty, uh, at sixty uh, exhibition. And uh, so I won't go through all of that, but I will acknowledge that uh, it did include uh, lectures. And that one of the lectures was by Pastor, uh, it was in collaboration with Covenant Baptist Church and featured Pastor Young and guest speaker Reverend Courtney Pace, Dr. Courtney Pace. And the discussion was on the Freedom Faith, the Women's Vision of Prathia Hall. And that was held uh, in our offices in the uh, multipurpose gallery. Uh, the other thing that I think uh, uh, that uh, Aaron didn't have a chance to talk about was some of the media uh, impressions and social media and, and uh, traditional media impressions that we received. We had six news outlets covering um, the event and that included four print and two television stations. Uh, the Washington Informer, Washington Times, East Arts, BNN, Channel Four, and Channel Seven. Received over nine thousand impressions across Facebook, Instagram, X, and LinkedIn. Lauren, if you have anything else you want to add, you can feel free to jump in at this time. If not?
No, I was getting my phone and trying to figure out how to turn it on. Um, well, thank you, Carla. I um, only thing I just really want to to focus on was that this was the inaugural exhibition in our gallery that's going to be dedicated to social justice themes during the time between Martin Luther King's birthday and Black History Month. Each year, there will be a different um, theme. This year, it was a jury exhibition grant and it was so fitting that at sixty, at sixty, we were celebrating the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. And I really want-
Excuse me, Lauren, we're having problems hearing you.
Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I was, what I was saying is this is so fitting that the topic this year was the sixtieth anniversary of the nineteen sixty-four um, Civil Rights Act. I also want to acknowledge the help and support from the events team and the comms team. In addition to the artwork that was submitted by artists, there were forty-nine our um, applications, of which twenty-seven artists were on display during, during the exhibition and fit with fifty works. But our events team also curated a video that included Mahalia Jackson singing before Dr. King's I Have a Dream speech, excerpts from his speech, and excerpts from the news, the press conference where President Lyndon B. Johnson signed the act. On our comms team, they, we had a special music um, tribute to the music of the movement that included from Mahalia Jackson to current songs and, and today's contemporary music. Um, and the importance of continuing the resilience and consider, considering the struggle. I will say for me personally, it was so important that this happened and it happened now. Twenty twenty could not just be a moment in time. And we needed to, we need to continue to be vigilant. We need to continue to uphold the legacy that we, and reflect upon Martin Luther King's beloved community and strive to achieve that. And we can only do that by talking about our history, talking about our future and sharing um, those, those pieces that are going to continue us to move towards a civil society. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. I'm so proud of my team who worked very hard on this in addition to getting out grants. So thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for that. IDEA Committee, Cecily?
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Cecily Habimana. I am um, joining via Zoom. I'm wearing a red shirt with uh, long braids today. Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Cecily Habimana. I am um joining via Zoom. I'm wearing a red shirt with a long braids today. Um, I'm excited to um be presenting for the first time. Um, this is our, we had our first um official idea committee meeting um just on Friday. And I was excited to be joined by um Clarith Langery and Logan Brown, um, who are both um newly um to the DC Commission as well. So that was really great. Um, the idea committee, um, I just want the first recap that was was formed in an effort for DC to be a more inclusive, diverse, and equitable arts community, um, ensuring that the commission continues to support artists and organizations that are sometimes overlooked um by traditional funding sources. And this is a critical work brought that brought more equity to the commission and also um as an effort to support the mayor's and the city's commitment to racial equity. Um, so the commission started the idea task force and developed forty-four recommendations for the commission uh to um become more equitable in terms of distributing grant funding. In addition to those forty-four recommendations, the commission passed uh an equitable funding model to support small and mid-sized organizations. And um it, you know, this was uh in direct response to the advocacy and leadership of uh Dr. Hopk- Hopkinson and um Mrs. Barry. So on Friday, when we met um on January nineteenth, the idea committee convened to discuss um just as a regular, some basic things, just like setting our regular meeting time. Um, given more background to um what it means to be the to for this committee in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. Um, reviewing the task force recommendations and defining the committee's purpose, objectives, and accountability measures. And as a result of the committee's meeting, the members will continue to work towards a path to executing the forty-four recommendations as described and needed, um, as well as exploring other best practices to integrate into its operations. Uh, we also had the opportunity to kind of look, look backward a little bit to see uh what had, what work had been done prior to um the the committee um prior to uh us working together. Um, and so we're reviewing that information as well. So I'm excited to be chairing this committee. Uh, we'll be meeting on a month-to-month basis. Um, and hopefully, and and definitely um have some updates for you all next month.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Cecily, and the committee. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Claire, I'm sorry.
Great, Claire. I wasn't sure if you were in the room.
Yes, I'm in the room. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Clarith E. Landry. Um, I prefer Claire. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm wearing a um pseudo-houndstooth pink and gray scarf and a a cream-colored uh cape, um, Gone with the Wind fabulous. So what I will say is um I, as the new Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for the Commission, I'm in addition to an incredible conversation with the DEIA Committee. Um, we are also going to be hosting tomorrow an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion convening on behalf of the other chief diversity officers across um government, both uh city government and federal government, um, as well as other chief diversity officers that sit within art um organizations. And the purpose of this um is to really understand where our best practices are, what are some of the common challenges that we've experienced in the past. We are a new department um with a lot of energy and a lot of support from the commission. And so we want to make sure that we create um an institutional practice that can benefit the grantees, that can benefit the organization for years to come. And part of that is having the right foundation that's solid and built upon equitable practices that have been successful in the past through recommendations from our peers and understanding how it's applicable to the commission. Um, so we're excited to be a part of that convening. Um, this includes members from the White House to Ford's Theater, to other um federal organizations as well. Um, so again, just a a great kickoff to the new year to be able to host it. Um, we'll have about fifteen to twenty participants, and we'll get to, we have an opportunity to share with them the um the new exhibit um from the public arts team, um, as well as invite um a DC-based artist, um hip-hop artist Nucci, who has received a lot of um, a lot of, I don't know if the word is critical acclaim, but just a lot of notoriety um with the way that he's bringing attention to the origins of the hip-hop and go-go community that originated here in DC. So he has a series that is on YouTube called The French Port uh Porch Presents, um, starting with local artists that he's highlighted, going all the way to being um, receiving laudatory commentary from the likes of Common, a Grammy, um Emmy, and I believe um, oh, gosh, not Tony yet, Oscar. He's received an Oscar. So he's almost at the EGOT. He's, he needs the T. Um, however, the point of the matter is to not only share what we're doing internally, to interact with our colleagues, but also highlight what the DC Commission does so well, which is to honor, support, and invest in DC-based artists. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Thank you. I don't want to applaud because the other committees will think that I showed favoritism, but applause, verbal applause. Thank you. Um, Arts Education, Hector.
Yes, uh, good evening. Uh, first, I'd like to express, you know, my pleasure in working with Andrea Brown, who heads the Education Committee and actually does an incredible job. You know, I am literally inspired by her enthusiasm, her search to actually improve and to reach out to the community at a greater length. So um kudos to her. Uh, with that, you know, I'm stealing a good portion of her thunder because what I'm going to really talk about is her work, uh Poetry Out Loud, Words on Fire Planning, Words on Fire uh Poetry Competitions. It's a two-day immersive experience for high school students and um which includes slam and written poetry and poetry presentation via the National Poetry Out Loud Competition. Thirteen DCPS uh schools and uh DCPCS uh have articulated interest in our participating vizier. Thirteen teaching artists have been assigned to prepare students for preliminary in-school competition. This year's Words on Fire uh Festival will take place on March fifteenth and seventeenth with the national finals in poetry uh scheduled for May second, where we hope our 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 students will be duly represented. Um, this is a program that I would greatly encourage your commissioners and the public to attend. It truly is a very insightful and it's a fun activity. It's great to see our kids uh be so inspired. Now, we are, we are reigniting the Creative Spark, uh, which is the plans are on the way to relaunch the Creative Spark Program for March fiscal year twenty-four. Now, it's a short time in front of us after its post-pandemic hiatus. This program provides three-season arts experiences for District DCVS and DCPCS at students in grades K through twelve. This year, Creative Spark will also include programming for older adults to to take place in local senior centers. Additionally, the Arts Education Department has met with Mayor's Office of Community Affairs to discuss plans to expand arts education for older adults and plans to create a broader demographic included in this conversation our MLK Library and the representatives from VA Hospital. Uh, this is really a wonderful program, which hopefully takes i- i- it takes our programming into veterans um and and very much with a purpose. Uh, frankly, this initiative was taken by Andrea, and I applauded very much because seniors is one of my my pet peeves, certainly because I'm there. And uh, but this is about all I have to report. Very enthusiastically, I'd like to say thank you to Andrea Brown. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions? I would like to also note uh to the commissioners that our commission is, it may be the only commission that doesn't um farm out uh Words Beats in Life, I meant Words in Life, but uh Poetry Out Loud. Many other commissions and state art agencies, um they utilize consultants, and it's a, it's really not something that they take control of and ownership of.
They outsource it.
And so we, this is a unique thing to our commission, and I think the impact that we have is shown because we, as a commission, own it and take ownership for it. So um we definitely have a model that if other state art agencies wanted to know how this could be done from within, and they could have really a understanding of how it impacts the community, we are presenting that model here. Right, thank you.
I agree, so, absolutely.
Thank you, Hector. Questions, comments? We have two special committee reports, starting with the foundation. Chase.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Chase Magano. I am an Italian-American male uh wearing, I I think a light violet-colored sweater. I'm a bit colorblind.
That would be corn flow.
We got jokes tonight. So I'm reporting on the Foundation Committee, which was created twenty-two days ago to explore the creation of a foundation to further further the goals of the agency in providing additional efficiencies and resources to the creative community. Um, in those twenty-two days, we've gotten a little bit done, uh, basically, uh, including three levels of activity. The first level of activity is actually just um filling the committee. And I'll just name the people who are committed already, and and I I would also point out that uh, tonight, I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee as a whole. I'm really speaking on behalf of myself, uh, because we haven't met yet. Um, just because of schedules aligning, um, but that will come next month. Uh, so I I obviously am on the committee. Uh, Ms. Melgarejo is on the committee. Uh, we actually heard from her as a commission a few months ago. Uh, Philippa Hughes, a visual arts curator, Jenny Billfield, art organization leader uh here, uh, Trill Johnson on staff here of, and uh Reggie Van Lee as an ex-officio member, being the chair of the commission. Uh, the second level of activity that we've taken is um sort of sort of naming, writing down some definitions, some timelines, uh, and 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 naming our purpose, you know, what we're actually going to do as a committee. I I won't go through it all, but I I did attach a a report or a brief uh that is meant to be a starting point indicating where the foundation idea currently is and laying out a path uh as well as a schedule for the committee to take over the next ten months. Um, and then the third level of activity is actually been uh really interesting. Outreach to other national funder colleagues, uh, basically in an effort to learn, to begin to learn some best practices and start those conversations from others who either have done this before or who are in the process of doing something similar. We've outreach to the following individuals for their thoughts of and advice, and and they've been very interesting conversations so far. Um, Alton Murray, a deputy commissioner from New York's, New York City Department of Cultural Affairs. Eddie Torres, grantmaker in the arts, Chris Denby, Advisory Board for the Arts, and David Daniels from the the Bynum Family Foundation. Um, notably, it's kind of interesting, uh, the uh the New York uh City Department of Cultural Affairs is considering a similar kind of model. So we're, we're going to be sort of working in parallel and talking to them a lot, uh, to to just share advice.
Have to beat them, you know.
Well, um, the this committee ends in October, so so that's our timeline. So we 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 got it going. The the other conversation that has come up uh in these first twenty-two days, uh, I I I will continue to put a fine point on this, that the foundation uh is not meant to, nor nor will it uh take money away from other money that is being given. Uh, the the point of this is new money, and I'll, and this type of uh foundation, this type of organization attracts the type of funders who are, um, who get it, you know, they're 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 uh pretty experienced people. Um, and and so we we anticipate and and will put in uh sort of stopgaps and and requirements to to ensure that the money is not just cannibalizing other money, but it really is for new interesting projects that that are going above and beyond or or filling gaps that aren't currently being serviced. Um, now that we do have some members committed to the committee, we aim to have our first full committee meeting within the next couple of weeks. Uh, once, like I said, once schedules are aligned. And this first uh meeting of the committee will focus on agreeing on a set of principles and processes. Uh, these could include things like discussions around confidentiality, timelines, roles, focus areas for each member, uh, that kind of thing. So I look forward next month to reporting uh on that meeting and being able to report uh on behalf of the entire committee as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions from anyone? Now, the last special committee is on Art Week twenty twenty-five, and I will give a very brief update on that. Not much since we last met, but you may recall it, last month's meeting, we talked about the three stakeholder meetings that have been held already. Aaron talked about the fourth one that's scheduled for February first at the Thurgood Marshall Center. Uh, and we had a delegation to attend Art Basel Miami this year as well as, well, last year as well as the year before. Uh, we've assembled and summarized a bunch of findings. The findings are wide-ranging and comprehensive. A lot of stuff has come out of those meetings. We will continue to churn through uh more input that we get. Uh, the advice that we got from the Art Basel executives was that we should bring a consultant in to help us sort this thing through. And we have a number of options, uh, who we're going to do that with. We had one conversation with one consultant, but we certainly are going to do an RFP that will be sent out to us for us to figure out which consultant we would use uh to do that work. That RFP is being prepared as we speak. The committee is being populated. I'm behind Chase in getting the committee organized. Uh, a number of people are interested, and we want actually some help from the consultant on what is the right composition of that committee before we try to staff it or populate it too quickly. So that's underway, and I'll certainly have more to report at next month's meeting. That's a report of Art Week twenty twenty-five. So as you can see, we're very busy, uh, very engaged in the critical work of how we continue to enhance the arts and humanities ecosystem in Washington, DC, and excited over the challenges before us. So we welcome all comments and assistance from our our colleagues, our grantees, our constituents out there. Uh, I don't think we have any unfinished or new business, so there being no, well, let me ask any unfinished new business. There being no further business, the next meeting of the commission will be held Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at five thirty PM. The time is now six thirty-six, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
That's great. Get it done.
Get it done. There should be a um communication coming to you around what we said to the grantees.